Okay, awesome. So we don't have a, do we have a formal agenda item for this meeting?
Yes, what we're going to do today is talk about the overall general progress on the candidate outreach. And I'm not review any particular candidates because then we're going to talk about interview process. Um, and then have an open discussion about uh what we're looking to accomplish here.
Okay, we do have the ability uh in this meeting to go to a closed session if there are individual candidates that we need to talk about.
Um. Okay.
Be respectful in the open public meeting to not. You know, give any details that might identify a candidate at this point. So you know, in generalities and updates and numbers and processes, I think are are appropriate to be held in this public meeting. If and when the time comes in this meeting, we want to move forward and have a discussion about individuals. Um, we will entertain a motion and go into a closed session.
Fine, that works.
Okay.
Perfectly. So as far as candidate development um outreach, we've reached out to four hundred and eighty-nine candidates. We've had two hundred and thirty-three responses, which is quite uh healthy. We've had eliminated one hundred and seventy-seven candidates. We've got twenty-two in pipeline, six in development, and ten on shortlist. Now, what's important here is we're boiling down candidates in development and pipeline. To get to the shortlist that uh we'll be talking about specific candidates, pros and cons, strengths and weaknesses. Um, to get ultimately the finalists on the shortlist of about six individuals. Um, and that's where we want to talk about the interview process with you. I can make some suggestions of what's worked in the past, and then I'd like anyone else to to speak up.
Let's let's go ahead, Timmy, start with that and let us know where we're we're sitting with uh some suggestions on a process.
Yeah, so when we have teams of individuals all weighing in on the the uh candidate pool, what we typically do, and it's worked out very well. Is have four members of the search team do the initial rounds of interviews. The initial round could be six, maybe eight people, depending on the qualifications that we're looking at. Those six to eight people that are shortlisted, we want to process them with the initial interviews. Within one week to ten days. Now, if it takes longer than that, we lose momentum with candidates, so we've just got to keep uh conscious of that. It's quite a heavy interview sessions for everybody, but uh we found that to work out the best. And we have a close to one hundred percent success rate on these types of roles. So we have, when what, once we get into interview phase, we're going to need to map out at least a week or ten days for each. Of the individual candidates on the shortlist. Once that has been completed, we want to make sure that the finalists, um, three, maybe four. Are interviewed and evaluated by the rest of the council. And that should take place over the course of another week. And by week number three, after we've started interviews, we're looking at maybe the final two coming on site. Um, that should be dealing with COVID and everything else. That that's probably the best interview cycle that I we've been experiencing. Um, but we're happy to hear any suggestions or talk about why that might not be a uh a process that you can follow. Um, so I'll leave it up to you to uh pose any questions at this time.
Tim, I think um based on some some discussion and feedback in our city council meeting last night. Um. It was, I don't want to speak for everybody or misspeak, but uh my impression was that. As a council, we felt like it was appropriate for us to be doing these initial rounds. And then when we get to the later rounds, we would bring in other members of city staff to help make a more. To bring some of their expertise and knowledge in the process to help make it a little more robust, kind of a a final stages of interviews, if that makes sense. So I think for for the first, you know, picking of which six or eight we might want to do the interviews with. Actually doing those six or eight and narrowing them down, I think that's going to be just the council, legal and HR at this point.
Okay.
Uh, Councilman Smith or Councilman Henderson, do either of you have any comments in with that direction?
Uh, yeah, I have a comment here. I would actually, you know, Tim had mentioned, you know, a a smaller group, obviously, doing those initial rounds. So in in relation to what you just described, uh Councilman Shields. Um, to what Tim was thinking, I I guess I just want to get Tim's thoughts on that. And then really talk through again the the logistics of your comment, um Steve, about, you know, having. The the council, which would obviously would constitute a quorum for us and the logistics of how we would. Um, facilitate that. Um, and obviously Chase can weigh in here as well and Jackie to make sure. That, you know, if we have the ability uh to to do all of those, um, obviously in a closed meeting setting, then then I think we can avoid a lot of that. But again, I I'm still concerned about the integrity of the process, um, making sure that we're um protecting the identity of those people that are. Um, interested without putting them in jeopardy and their their current employments and those types of things. Um, again, I just want to talk to I a little more maybe insight from Tim, uh based on the comments now that you have given, Steve, of how we actually facilitate that.
Okay, thanks, Councilman Smith. Um. It is true what you're saying about confidentiality and um people not throwing their hat in the ring if they're fully exposed. So that's why we keep it to a smaller initial screening. Now, everybody's going to have a visibility to the candidate profile with. Uh, notes and a write-up on why they're qualified. So this is just to whittle, you know, boil down the shortlist to a final round where we've got a panel. Um, interviewing, what I was suggesting earlier is more of an individual, each individual interviewing. The candidates, if we do that on the first round and get the whole council involved, it's gonna. Kind of drag out the process lining up everyone's calendars. Um, if we decide to get everybody involved with the initial rounds of screening, then it's probably going to be two panels. Um, to line up for calendars and then the final rounds on the second and then final, it's going to be the entire team. So we we really do need to figure out what works best for the the council members as well as. Not losing momentum with the candidates. Um, what we're at jeopardy with the way um you suggested earlier with the entire council being involved is, one. We lose momentum with the candidates, two, we've got people who are not willing to throw their hat in the ring if they're fully exposed. Um, and we've got a few people who we've spoken to that have said confidentially, I'd like to know more about it. And um, you know, they don't want to have their their uh profile exposed to everybody. So we we need to figure out what is the best for you and what is the best way to get the most highly qualified candidates in front of you.
So, Tim, if I can ask a follow-up question, then would it, do you feel like it would be a? Um. An adequate process, I guess, if in the initial um phases here. We review again the shortlist, you know, the write-ups from you, uh their bios, those types of things individually. And uh make recommendations back without having to go, uh, you know, without having to convene a meeting. Again, scheduling is going to be a challenge, there's no doubt about it, but without having to convene a meeting that then would require the note for. The noticing for quorum and those types of things, do you feel like that would be an adequate process? If, again, you give us the the information for all these individuals that you have deemed qualified for the shortlist. For us to review as individual council members and then make those recommendations back and really allow you to then assimilate that and bring it back to the group. Is that is that adequate for this step of the process or not?
I believe that is adequate. Um, on the credits that you get with each one of the candidates who made the shortlist, you'll have. Data points of what they've been involved with economic development, the size of cities they've they've currently worked in or in the past. So you should have an overall viewpoint of the breadth and scope of their responsibilities. And then obviously, it comes down to chemistry with the uh with the council members and the rest of the people in the city that they'll be dealing with. So we should be able to boil down the shortlist with a smaller number of people interviewing on the front end. And then on the back end, you're still going to have four, maybe five candidates, because all these candidates are qualified and interested. If um we do it the other way around, it's it's really looking at candidates that are maybe not as qualified. And again, dragging out the process a little more than it it should be.
So that being said, I think there's, I think there's two um. Questions. Number one is um, are the council members here present? Um, comfortable in in giving a formal direction, making a decision here that we should. Distribute out these ten names and their bios to the members of the council. And have each of us give feedback within a short timeframe on which ones we'd like to have follow-up interviews with.
I have a couple of questions real quick, Steve. Tim, with the four-four person kind of interviews, are you saying that's four people from the city plus your team, or is that including your team?
No, typically, we've already screened them and qualified them. So what we do is facilitate the meetings, we don't necessarily participate in the meetings. Um, we're happy to participate, we've done it in the past, but what we basically are there to do is facilitate. And have your team do the actual interview.
So, okay, so that's four people from our team, really, I mean, in at least the conversations that we've had, I know Sherry feels this way as well. Uh, in in doing interviews, we, this, this is the one position in the city where it's it's the council's decision, right? We're hiring the manager, and we don't feel it's really appropriate for staff to be interviewing their boss. So if that's a team, really, I see that as maybe the HR director, right? That that's helping, maybe helping us through that process and three council members anyway, that's still a quorum. And I just don't see that there's a confidentiality issue by using the closed meeting system. We just don't discuss names and and call, you know, specifics of qualifications, where they've worked before, et cetera, in an open meeting. That's, I think that's that's easy to do. As far as coordinating schedules, that's something that that we just have to commit to doing, right? We'll make the time to do it. This is the most important thing that at least I think we'll end up doing in this term of of my service. So I think we've all committed to that and we'll we'll get it done. And I totally understand the process and keeping things going. I've done hiring um and gone through this process in in my career. You know, in the corporate world forever, and you're you're absolutely right, you have to keep that momentum with the candidate, you can't stretch it out over a couple of month period. We have to move.
Exactly. Um, because some of those candidates that we've originally spoken with to attract for the role, we've been. While we've been developing the shortlist, um, it's been already about a month since they were initially contacted. And so we're, you know, they're getting a little anxious, we're getting a little anxious, we we'd like to nail down the interview process. And then we can set expectations. About confidentiality, when we go into a closed-door meeting, we just, you know, have to make sure that everybody. Um, knows that they're they're going to have a free will to speak however they want, and we'll be able to answer any questions based on qualifications.
Yeah, I think I think I'd like, um, Councilman Henderson asked my question that was my second part of the question is. Is that I think uh it it might be appropriate just to weigh in, Chase, with the kind of a a good direction for all of us here. Um, are we acting appropriately and within, you know, our legal obligations? Um, to conduct these these conversations and interviews in a closed-door session um as a quorum?
Yeah, I think you are, based upon what Tim has described, the process that he's recommended and kind of the discussion that we've had with council members. I think you're fine and within the bounds of the Open and Public Meeting Act to not discuss the details in an open meeting.
Right.
Um, but maybe narrow down amongst yourselves who it is you want to take into a closed-door meeting to discuss in greater detail.
Got it, okay. And I just want to make sure, because I I think both Tim and and Councilman Smith expressed. Uh, and I and I echo their concern that we don't want to discourage any candidates from their participation, nor do we want to. Um, even accidentally betray any trust or confidences in regards to this interview process. We want to be very careful with that, and and if there's going to be any mention of names or things, I just want to make sure that we are appropriate. In in using the closed, the closed meeting um to answer those questions, to do that process rightly. I don't I don't want us to a abuse the system one way or the other, and I think Councilman Smith has has expressed that concern repeatedly, so.
And and another recommendation I might make is, if you have, and I feel comfortable making this recommendation as your legal counsel. If you have details about individuals that Robert Happ has provided. And you want to do the narrowing down of those individuals in a closed-door meeting based upon. You know, those parameters set within the Open and Public Meetings Act, I believe that would also be appropriate. As, again, as long as you have those details that have been provided, whether it's a candidate profile or some of the other information and data that has been provided by Robert Happ.
Yeah, that's that's good, counsel. Thank you. Uh, Jared or or Clint, do you guys have any questions about that, counsel?
No, I just a another, I guess, comment about it. Um. And really, a well, a question just to Tim, right now you have ten people as identified on your shortlist. You still have, uh, you know, a number of people that are, you know, in development or in the pipeline. Do you foresee many others um reaching that shortlist? Or uh at this point, do we have, in your opinion, ten qualified individuals that we now as a council could review independently? And again, narrow down to maybe that six or seven that we want to really take into that. I guess, first phase of the interview before we narrow it down to to the last couple. So again, we talked about timing here. Um, again, those ten that we have are, are we going to see? Do you do you feel at this phase of the process, we're going to see many more make it onto that shortlist? And are these ten good for us to now, again, really kind of narrow down to to Steve's point a few minutes ago? Um, you know, in a shorter timeframe, um, individually and say, these are the six or seven or whatever that number is that we want to now engage in. That initial conversation.
Yes, but good question, Councilman Smith. What we've got here is a a cross-section of a very wide net, um, both local candidates within Utah and out of the state. And um, so what we do in a typical process is boil that down to the the uh group that's going to be interviewed. Now, if you'd like visibility to some of the people on the pipeline and and um. Shortlisted candidates right now, the reason why there's ten on the shortlist and people on pipeline and development. Is there might be a candidate or two from the pipeline or development that knock out one of the shortlisted candidates. So it's a little bit of a fluid process and um. And I'll defer to Tricia to talk about, you know, candidates in pipeline and development, she's done the initial screenings with them. And then when we get to shortlist, obviously, I speak with every one of them and anyone that she uh. Wanting answers on on the shortlist or on the development or the pipeline candidates. So Tricia, can I get you to comment on the quality of the candidates in development or pipeline? And see, uh, I think Clint's question is, is, do we have the ten right now? Or are we gonna move on with uh changing them out a little bit?
I can add on one thing.
Tim, hopefully you can hear me.
Tricia, if I can add one, one part to the answer that I'd like to get from you, and that is. Um. If we pick six or eight candidates we're going to interview, that doesn't necessarily stop the rest of your process, does that? You're going to still continue to develop other candidates, correct?
Correct, and the, yeah, some of the candidates are earlier in the process, and we've been talking to some candidates that have been in the process for a while. So as we go through the initial phases of qualification and interviewing, there may be somebody that comes up late to the party. So we will move them in if they look like uh they're really attractive and they're possibly a better fit. Than the people on the shortlist that we've already interviewed. So, Councilman Smith, it's uh, it it's correct that we do not stop the process, even though we're in interview phase.
Right, and and those people we're interviewing, we may not find the right person, right? That we may, we may, I mean, really, that's how I'm approaching this is, I'm not going to settle. For one of the eight people that are first presented to us, we need to find the right person. So, Tim, if if I'm interpreting this this correctly, I mean, really, I think we're all good with your process of. Of sourcing candidates, reviewing them, and then bringing in them to us for interviews. Your question really is, at that point, what is, what's the process for the interviews? Who's involved? What days can we set them, et cetera, right?
Right, correct.
Then I think, at least from what we've talked about. So wants to be involved in that, and really, the only other person I think that we would need to have for those interviews is HR. And so we just need to now give you days that we can schedule those interviews, right? Every single week and we move through those in a in a timely manner.
Yeah, and we'll begin preparing candidates for the expectation that there's a date or. A couple, two or three days that it could happen over to keep their schedules free and managing the logistics from there.
So I, I wa, I have a, I guess, a thought or a recommendation, but before I do that, I did, I know Tricia hasn't had a time to weigh in. I just wanted to make sure we gave her an opportunity if she had more more to add to that.
Okay. Uh, Tricia on mute. Okay, Tricia, are, can you get off mute?
Well, she is, uh, uh, Councilwoman, would you mind?
Uh, the the reception wasn't very clear, Tricia, can you restate your question?
Looks like Tricia might be having some technical difficulties, I think we can come back to, we can come back to her.
We'll come back.
Remaintain it, so um, just.
Here's, here's a thought, Steve, if if I can, really quick, just a thought, we can throw this out there for discussion, get Tim's uh input on it. What I would suggest at this stage of the game is that, again, each member of the council be distributed the uh the appropriate information. For the ten candidates that are on, currently on the shortlist. We review those individually and be prepared a week from now at next week's scheduled meeting. Um, to come back and uh notice out for a closed, that we can then go in and talk about our each. Basically, of our individual impressions of those and come up with, again, the shortlist, I guess, the shorter list of those that. We would like to move into the interva, interview phase and uh and basically I'll be prepared to be able to, you know, come with our calendars available. Of when we can schedule that so that we can give that to Tim and he can begin that that reach out. Again, you know, I think keeping the momentum has been talked about here, I want to make sure that we keep that momentum. Uh, I think we've found a, you know, a appropriate way for um the members of the council that want to be involved to to be involved in that process. Uh, so that would be, I guess, my recommendation at this point, if we're ready to kind of talk about uh the next steps and how we get there, is to, again. Get that information distributed and all of us to come back in a week, be prepared to talk about narrowing that list down and making those contacts and setting them up for that initial interview.
Yeah, yeah, I completely agree. Um, one thing I would like possibly to suggest on that is. After the person's been evaluated by each member, if there are specific questions, can we get it the night before? The day before then, the next meeting, so that we can be prepared to answer any questions that you may have. Because we may need to reach back out to the candidates and it'll give us enough time to answer any questions that you have after you do. Uh, your evaluation based on paper. Um, that would be helpful. Um, obviously, we'll be able to field questions on as needed basis, but if there are specifics that you'd like to see, we would like to get those. Uh, the feedback from you uh within twenty-four hours of the meeting, so that we have time to touch base with candidates beforehand.
So thank you, thank you, Councilman Smith, Tim, for those, for that feedback there. I think that um, uh, Tim, your 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 last comment there articulates a concern that I have. Um, in regards to appropriate timeframes, if we are um waiting till next Thursday to have a conversation and waiting for. Um, you know, follow-up answers or or clarification on any candidates. And then we're another week out before we might be scheduling, you know, interviews with these people. We we might be fourteen to, you know, twenty days out before we're actually conducting the interviews. That, I think that's substantially longer than the seven-to-ten day window that you were asking for. Um, so I I guess I would ask the question, and I have a couple of other questions, but I would ask the question first is. Is that timeframe becoming too long? Would it, would it, would you advise us to try and advance that? Um, you know, get get these candidates. Uh, I guess, get our our list of candidates ahead of next Thursday's meeting so that we could perhaps get into closed session. Verify among the council members which of those six or eight that we're ready to move forward in. And then give you direction on some specific dates early the following week, is that, is that an appropriate timeframe or is that too long?
Um, well, like Councilman Smith had mentioned, it's getting everybody exposed to the number of candidates that they'd like to see. If you're getting, look at all ten of the candidates, that's going to drag out the process a little bit. If we, if we go into the shorter list of six or eight candidates, that's going to speed up the process. And once we get into interview phase, we can kind of keep the momentum. So this is getting to the interview phase. Um, and we would like your feedback on any one of the candidates that we get on the shortlist. Uh, so, you know, there's pros and cons to both uh situations. And if, you know, what I'd like to do is, I'm going to defer to Tricia on this about. When the candidate profiles will be ready for you to review. And then we can set the the timeframe and set expectations with candidates. And Tricia, you want to comment on that or the earlier question?
Thank you. I apologize, everyone, I dialed back in. So, um, I I think the question was uh twofold. One, is the integrity of the ten on the shortlist the candidates that we would recommend? And I would say yes, very strongly. I think to Tim's earlier point, we will continue to develop candidates. And should someone bubble up that we feel is better suited or really um well-suited for the role, then we will bring that to your, him or her to your attention. As far as candidate profiles and presentations, if we are looking for all ten to be completed, it will take. You know, a few cycles of time within our team to get those prepared. Early part of next week is realistic. Um, if we're paring that down, certainly we can get them over to you faster. So I'll defer to the number of people that you'd like to see from that shortlist.
And I'll just comment really quick, for for me, again, knowing the the vetting process that they've been through and the fact at this stage of the game, they have made. Um, your cut for the shortlist, I believe that they all deserve at least a, an initial look from the members of the council. Um, I would like to look at all ten, I, again, based on the ten that are on there, short of you guys paring that down. Based on something that you're aware of in the vetting process, I certainly haven't had a chance to look at that and and for me to say one over the other. So, um, again, as it stands, I, those ten that currently sit on there, I would like to be able to to review that individually. And then again, back to Steve's comment just a minute ago, I would very much agree that, and really was my initial thought that. You know, should our next meeting be a week from today, next Thursday, that at that time, uh, again, we are prepared really to come out of that. Um, that meeting, um, really with clarity of the the five, six, whatever that number is, that. We want to now have you again make that that initial setup with that we can sit down and visit with them. Uh, again, I don't want to extend the timeframe any longer that we need than we need to. I just wanted us to be able to, as a council, be uh confident that we've been thorough in the process moving forward.
Yes, and thank you, Councilman Smith. Um, one thing we can do to. Um, one thing we can do to expedite the process, it because it does take a a lot of effort to put the candidate profiles together. On the initial ten, we can give you resumes and bullet points. Um, about why they're qualified for the role and then develop the candidate profiles for the shortlisted of the ten candidates. So if we've got ten candidates, you guys may feel so one or one or two is not fully qualified. But you have enough time, excuse me, to look at their resumes and uh review our notes on their qualifications. Uh if that's the route you want to go. Because for to expedite the process, typically, we bundle the shortlist of candidates with the candidate profiles, which we will do. But if you want visibility to all ten, we can expedite it that way if you think it's appropriate.
And again, I think a little bit of that comes from just our, or at least me personally, my own. Um, I guess, lack of understanding of exactly what that entails on your side of things, so based on what you just said. I I would be comfortable with you, again, providing their their resumes and bulleted points for us to do that initial review. Um, because I think that that's going to give the members of the council a lot of that. Um, work history and experience and those things that we're really looking for um initially. To, again, narrow down that list and then allow you the time to provide uh the full candidate profile um for that shortlist of people, I would be comfortable with that.
Okay.
Let me just, uh, for the record, let me just interrupt real quick, it looks like Councilmember Orne has joined us. Um, I just wanted to make sure that everybody's acknowledging that.
Thanks, Steve, I I've been here for a few minutes, but I'm just listening, I'm trying to catch up, sorry, I was like.
No problem.
This is Jared. Might help uh get Sherry caught up, so we're, we've been talking about the process, so Tim, I feel like we're kind of talking in circles a little bit. I want to go back to your your initial um point of trying to nail down the process, so you're saying that. You want to have council look through that shortlist and do basically a screening. And then select those that we want to interview and go from there, correct?
Yeah, and then, you know, if we do expedite, if we provide resumes and bullet points on notes. Of what's not in the resume of why they're qualified, it will expedite things for us to provide candidate profiles on the shortlist and candidates to be interviewed. That's that's what uh we were getting at there.
But Tim, if I understand, you're you're outlining kind of two things. You could forward us resumes and bullet point qualifications on these ten individuals. And out of, based on those resumes and those bullet points, we would select six to eight of these. That then you would then complete a full candidate profile on, is that, is that what you're saying?
Yes, yeah.
And then based on those candidate profiles, we would then narrow it down again to.
No.
Yeah, I guess I'm just unsure of what that candidate profile then, is that a part of the interview process? I'm I'm unsure, there's. Two steps here, I want to make sure what each step is.
It, as Tricia mentioned, it there's more that goes into the candidate profile from appearance that. And the overall discussion on what's presented, when we bullet point out the qualifications of why they're uh qualified for the job. When we put that into a candidate profile, it's more elaborate. Um, and you you're gonna get more information that you can uh disclose to other people, but. What we like to do is give uh you ability to visibility to be able to say yes or no. To a certain extent, or maybe have questions on on the candidates. Um, and then we go back to them and get any answers that are appropriate and see if they're gonna move forward or not.
So is it, it, I don't want to put words in your mouth, the candidate profiles then become a tool for us to use in the interview process, is that? Or or basis for questions in the interview?
Uh, not necessarily, it's just a nice presentation on each one of the candidates. Um, there's, and I'll defer to Tricia a little bit here, uh she and the team put those together. Um, and it it takes a fair amount of time to 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 put a candidate profile together and so to expedite the process. For the the shortlisted ten candidates, we could do resumes and bullet points and then. Uh, do profiles on just the candidates that will be interviewed.
What's the timeframe, do you think, to complete those profiles after the council were to give you feedback? On which ones we would want those profiles done on?
Yes, good question, and Tricia, would you like to comment on that?
Sure, usually, a candidate presentation or profile would take a day or two to prepare, so given if it were six or eight. We would put more people on the team, quite frankly, to get them done, but probably two to three days before the next round of interviews and or another meeting like this. Does that answer your question?
Y- yeah, that's great, I I think I would ask the the members of the council to to chime in on this because. There's a, there's a time horizon issue, there's a scheduling issues, right? We we, I think we need to address a couple of of questions here, the first being. I- if we can get the resumes and bullet points before the weekend, can we, as a council, commit to getting? Um, you know, our feedback on those ten uh back to Tim and Tricia by perhaps end of Tuesday next week? And that would give them at least Wednesday to per- prepare or 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 at least a little bit of time to prepare for our next Thursday meeting. Um, I just uh I'm unsure what we can do to help advance the process between now and next Thursday, other than either ask you to do. Workups on all ten of these, or we need to narrow it down quickly so we can actually have something moving forward by next Thursday. Otherwise, we're another week out and another week out before we're even getting to meet any of these people.
Steve, can I come in here last?
Yeah, please.
Um, so, sorry, this is just the my summary of this, so we have. This document you sent us, it shows us their resume and the bubble points, right? Um, Tricia mentioned things that bubble up, so you guys have the things that bubble them to the top of your candidate list, you're gonna list those for us and send those off to us. We're gonna review those, send back our top, however many, six top people that we want to have the full in-depth profiles, you're gonna do those within. Maybe a couple of days if we send you six and then we'd be ready to go Thursday, rock and roll on this, right? Um, am I, am I understanding that correctly, Tricia?
Yeah.
So how, so do we really need until end of day Tuesday or can we? Can we, if we really want this to get moving along, let's say we we have them two and by end of day Monday, that gives them two days to have it ready. Get them back to us and we're prepared and ready to go.
And that, that's what I'm trying to get at, Sherry, is, and I think where Tim's wanting to get us to is, look. Yes, Steve, there's gonna be a an initial lag time, right, for this initial round, but then we need to get into a regular weekly schedule. So if we're looking at this shortlist, council, yeah, then we can look at it, say, over the weekend, give a deadline of Monday or Tuesday by whatever time. Council says, here's the ones that we want you to do those profiles on on ups. And then we have our interview schedule and every single week, we have a, we need to have a a weekly schedule from there on that. And we have that initial council meeting early in the week, Monday, Tuesday, review the the new ones that have come through. And then we have the interview schedule for, you know, two or three mornings of of a couple of hours the rest of the week and we. Whatever that is, but we need to get to that weekly schedule, but this is this, the initial startup, right, Tim? Looking at this, getting those initial ones, and then get into that. Weekly schedule as we just keep going, it's not gonna be starting over every time, Steve.
Yeah, yeah.
Got it, so if I can share a thought then, um, and and I I'll I'll ask each of you to comment on this thought, but. If we were to say in our Thursday morning meeting, starting today. We're, we we review a shortlist of candidates that we are going to get resumes and bullet points on. By by end of the day on Monday, the council will have individually picked. Um, you know, six or eight candidates. Um, but the problem is, is that we might all see different characteristics that we like or don't like. Or that we would like more information on or more information, and I don't know that individually. Making decisions is gonna help us narrow that list down to only six or eight. Um, my my five or six might be different than Councilman Henderson's five or six, and then we still have ten candidates, does that make sense? So I I I think we need to answer how we would go about. Maybe a spreadsheet where we vote or rank choice voting or something here, right? And then that would then empower Tricia and Tim and their team to then take those um selected candidates. And prepare the summaries for our following Thursday meeting. In that following Thursday morning, then, we could review those profiles. And any new candidates that they might have added that we want resumes and bullet points on for the following week. And I think that gets to what you're talking about, Jared, kind of getting into a routine and a cycle, so we're we're predictable and routine. And giving Tim and Tricia ability to say, okay, we know that this is when we're scheduling interviews, this is when we're doing things, this is how we're meeting, this is when we're narrowing people down. It is, what are what are your guys' thoughts about that? And then especially answering that question about how we go from ten into, or you know, four individual picks or five individual picks to that list of six or eight.
Well, it it may be, Steve, that we like them all.
Right.
All, right, we we don't know until we get until we get into that.
That's true.
That's just our process, right, we just go through it and if if we go through that screening and we all agree, hey, these five were awesome. And the others, the other five, we have no interest in, then it's easy, right? If there's, if we get into it, list of ten and and three of us really want to talk to six of them, right? That, I mean, tha- that will, that will happen naturally in that process, but I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna list this ten and say, geez, they all look really good, but. But I have to eliminate two because we're going for eight.
Right.
And if I can, if I can really quick, that's really kind of gets back to, I think, what my original thought was, and that was, again. Get get the resumes, get the bullet points that uh that the Robert Half team has put together. Um, I think the appropriateness of still having um a timeline by next, say, Tuesday, since Monday is a holiday, to where we ask. For any of those additional follow-up questions that we have after reviewing those, that would allow the team to then get those. But, you know, and have that by Thursday morning when we meet next again, and Thursday morning. We can, at that point, to your point, Steve, of how do we decide? I think next Thursday is the appropriate time where we come back and collectively uh get some of the answers to those additional questions we had, discuss them in that closed setting. And come out of that, giving direction to the Robert Half team of the next ones we want to see advanced in the process.
Got it.
Is that, is that appropriate, Tim, does that keep us on a adequate timeline?
Yes, um, I believe that's a a great way to go about it, you know, what we'll do as a team is provide. The resumes of the most qualified candidates with bullet points and then get your feedback and and move forward appropriately.
Yeah, I, there's two questions about that, Tim. Moving from a list of ten to a certain number of candidates that we're we're interested in moving to the next step. Is that next step an initial interview? And how long do you expect that interview to be for that initial conversation with the candidate?
That's a good question, um, yes, what we're doing is moving towards a first round of interviews, we need to know. Who's gonna be on the interview schedule and then probably have six to eight questions for each candidate, all the same questions. And keep the interviews to forty-five minutes, probably no longer than an hour. Um, if you have everybody uh on the council interviewing the candidates on the first rounds, I would pair it to two panels. Um, so that it's it's a man, otherwise you're gonna put a candidate through six hours of interviews. Um.
So you your suggestion would be then we do like two rounds of three or four a day, forty-five minutes to an hour each. We we block out four hours and get that done.
Um, yeah.
So uh Clint, Jared, Sherry, what what does your calendar look like? Um, the the week following for us to be able to 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 do some and and schedule some interview times? Um, you know, if I'm looking, I I have some quite a bit of flexibility that following week, but I I if I'm looking at the calendar. That's the week of the twenty-second through the twenty-sixth. Um, is there, are there specific days in there that would be good for us to schedule some interviews or not?
I think, I'll. Go ahead, Sherry.
Sorry, I'll adjust, I have a couple of board meetings, we have our our city council meeting, we have a board meeting Monday morning, but the rest of the stuff is things I'll just tap to bump.
Uh Clint, what about you?
Um, you know. I think all of us really, at this point, have committed to make some availability and I'll do the same Tuesday, I've got some availability. Um, Wednesday, again, ahead of council that night, uh I've got some availability, my. My challenging times right now during the legislative session, based on other responsibilities, are really Thursday mornings are the most challenging for me, but again, I'm gonna. I'm gonna work appropriately to to commit myself to be part of the process, so.
Jared, are there any out days for you that that week?
Well, I mean, there's, there's always gonna be things that come up, I think we need, we need to nail down regular days that we plan on every single week. And if if there's a conflict like like that particular week, I'm traveling Thursday and and coaching a soccer tournament in Arizona Friday. But that doesn't mean I'm not available, I could get on a call and 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 listen and participate, I don't know how we need to, so I I think that we. And especially for for Robert Half and the candidates, I think we've got to nail down, look, let's block out, let's plan on doing interviews on Friday mornings. Right, whatever that is so that we can plan ahead, if we're gonna go week to week, i- it's gonna be a scheduling nightmare.
Got it, so what if we, uh uh and again, I'm just thinking out loud, I I I'll take any feedback or or corrections or here. What if we were to block out from nine AM to one PM on Tuesdays and Wednesdays for us to conduct interviews? Um, that would give us up to eight interviews each week and then we would just keep that, the twenty-third, the twenty-fourth, the second and the third, the ninth and tenth. Just keep that rolling with an understanding that sometimes there may only be a couple of us and sometimes there may be all of us. Um, but at least now we have a specific time we can work our schedules around, we can commit to that and keep going. Um, any objections or?
Wednesday, Steve, is ton, I have tons of different board meetings, Wednesdays. And so if we, if we do it on Wednesdays, it conflicts with many other boards that I serve on, do you guys have any specific board dates that you? You, I can have meetings on those days because your board meetings are opposites. I have boarding meetings Mondays, Wednesdays, I never have a board meeting on Friday, so Fridays are great for me. Um, I, that would be my only suggestion is try not to conflict with meetings we know are scheduled and we're supposed to attend.
Well, I think, and and another issue, I think, it it'll be difficult, Steve, I think, to block out four or five hours, I mean. That's, that's the majority of of the actual workday. Um, so I I guess I would turn back to to Timothy and his team. You know, what what is, what do you guys see as that weekly schedule being? Do you normally do interviews, say, two or three times a week in the mornings? You know, for one or two days and a couple in the evenings, how does that generally work out?
Hey, you know, you folks are making some great points, it it is easier to have a specific time during the week, whether it's an hour or three hours. Uh, for us to, you know, put in candidates to be interviewed. I do understand that everyone has, you know, their commitments that they've made to other um board positions and or things that they've got going on. Um, so if we could figure out a time that works for everybody, then we can fill those slots appropriately with the candidates. If it's on an as-needed basis, I think it will complicate scheduling, so I'll defer to the team to figure out what what works best.
I would, I'd agree with you, I I think Mondays and Fridays generally are a little more free from from board meetings, especially after the legislative session, right? We have the league and Southwest Mayor's are Monday mornings, that basically takes up my whole Monday from eight AM to like two P. Um, plus my job and and coaching and whatnot.
Yeah.
But Fridays, Fridays generally, there's no board meetings, a little bit freer. Um, but what I would kind of foresee is doing like a Friday morning. Um, and two or three hours, I think it's, at least for me, that would be kind of the limit for each session, whether it's in the morning or evening. But I would think for some of our candidates, um, evening might might work too, I think we need to have one day. One day scheduled where it's. You know, interviews in the in the late afternoon or evening and another day where it's mornings. I think Friday, Friday mornings works good. I don't know if anybody else has. Um, work or or other board meeting conflicts on Friday and mornings. Um, and then evenings, I would maybe, if we were going to do a late afternoon or evening, maybe a Thursday. So that we're. Fairly close together, and then we have our kind of council review of of this sort of stuff, maybe on Mondays.
If I hear you right, Jared, you're suggesting perhaps. Monday afternoon and Friday mornings. With an additional, perhaps Thursday evening, if there were some extra candidates we needed to squeeze in.
Kind of, sorta. Saying that Mon- Mon, if we can identify a time on Mondays for us to have kind of our screening meeting with Robert Half, right? Do that screening, talk about the the candidates so they can do the profiles. And then we do interviews Thursday afternoons slash evening and Friday mornings.
For me personally, Monday afternoons, generally, um, I have a little more flexibility. Friday mornings are fine. Um. Thursdays are, you know, afternoons are are hit and miss, but again, I'll. Um. Whatever works best for the group, I'll do my best to to rearrange and and do things if that's the other time. Friday mornings are good. Like I say, uh, I have some availability on Tuesdays, um, generally speaking, in the mornings as well.
First for me, Monday mornings, um, once a month, I have a garbage board meeting at nine, but so if we did it more like. You know, like eleven or twelve or anything after that, I'm good on Mondays. Friday morning's great. Thursday afternoon's evening's great. I don't have conflicts with boards on those days.
Okay.
Okay, so that's good feedback, everybody. Um. Trying to figure out how to how to move forward. I would suggest that we. Um. We block out, um. Perhaps. Um. Maybe one to four on Monday. And. Perhaps, um. Maybe. Ten to one or nine to noon. On Friday. And then we can reserve. Thursday. Um. Maybe we would limit the amount of time there because of some of the potential conflicts and other things, just to maybe only. Uh, an hour or two hours. Um. Maybe like two to four or something like that on Thursday afternoons or or. Three to five or something, where we could squeeze in a couple extra candidates if there were some things we needed to move forward quickly. Um, are there any comments to that?
I I thought the Monday meeting was for us as a council to get together to vet through the things that we want to. See as interviews for the later. So the Monday thing I would thought would just take a smaller chunk of time so that we can vet those. Was I misunderstanding?
That that is what I was suggesting, Sherry, and and Tim, maybe you can clarify that, because each week we still need to go through the new list of candidates you're bringing through, right? That was my, that was my thinking for Monday, was look, if that's an hour, maybe hour and a half. Where the council discusses those, so you guys can get those profiles ready for the next batch of candidates. Because this is, this is an ongoing process. And then Thursday and Friday were both interview days. And Thursday, I was thinking. A little bit later in the afternoon, right, for those candidates that are working and can't break away in the mornings for interviews.
And that's what I heard too. Um. With, if we're doing a Monday meeting with my team, then we probably don't need, unless there's a reason for the council. Um, to have our Thursday morning meeting. So it we could move our Thursday morning meeting. With the entire group to Monday afternoon. And with the target to uh have candidates to be interviewed on Thursday or Friday.
Is this proposed for next Monday? Again, Monday actually is a holiday. City offices are closed. And and I'm actually going to be out of town that day, so.
Yeah, it's uh, it's never, I think we should hold. Next Thursday's meeting and then start the following week with the Monday afternoon.
Yeah, I think I think that works for sure. And then really, uh, to Steve's point. I mean, as as we go through this process, and it could, this could still take us several months to find the right person. There's going to be times where. Like I I mentioned, the late of this month, I might, I might be coaching a soccer game during the time that we have to do interviews that day, and and I miss those, right? That that's going to happen to each of us along the way, but we have to keep the process moving. And if if we know what these days and times are, we can better plan for. So I I think that I think that's a great idea, Tim. Let's keep next Thursday and start this schedule the week after, and and we'll get this thing going.
Yeah, great.
I I'm good with that. I still would like, again, going back to the the actual screening process. Again, I'd like us to be prepared. Um, next Thursday, really to be able to go in and talk about what we've been able to review on these ten candidates. So we can start narrowing the list at that point, which again would require. Um, us to have any additional questions we have on these candidates to Tim and his team. By, you know, Tuesday, Wednesday, at the very latest of next week, so that they're prepared to bring that information to us. Um, on Thursday morning when we discuss them.
Okay.
Yeah, so so what I'm hearing then is. For this initial, let's kind of get a calendar here. So. Tim and and Tricia, their team are going to get us resumes and bullet points on the ten people on the shortlist right now. Each member of the council will then review those ten names. And give recommendation of which ones we would like to. Get full profiles on and and move towards an interview process. That could be all ten. Depending on what feedback we get from each member of the council. Then, um, the next Thursday morning. We would discuss two things. So this is Thursday, the eighteenth. We would continue to have our AM meeting. We would discuss potentially new shortlist candidates that we would like to get. You know, the the resumes, bullet points and stuff on. And we just have those. If there's anybody you add to that list the next Thursday. You would include their resumes and bullet points with that. And then on Monday, the twenty-second, we would come back with. New. Feedback for you, you know, screenings. We go from the Thursday to the Monday. Then the following Thursday, the twenty-fifth, and Friday, the twenty-sixth, we would have our first interviews. With the candidates that we. You know, kind of formalize next Thursday morning's meeting. Is that, is that what I'm hearing from everybody?
Yeah, that's that's a good game plan, and I think on the Monday, the twenty-second. We should have. An idea of what calendars are open, what time on Thursday and Friday, what candidates. That we're moving into interview phase, so we can get everything handled logistically. And then we'll also talk about new, net new candidates. At the same time. So it's going to be scheduling. Interviews and net new candidates week over week.
Got it. So with that idea being that we would conduct first interviews on Thursday, the twenty-fifth, and Friday, the twenty-sixth. And then the next week on Thursday, the fourth, and Friday, the fifth, are there any objections to those, understanding? There's going to be potential conflicts on all of those days for certain members of the council?
Yeah, we just, we just need to do it. And I'm and I'm the first one that will say twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, that that might, that'll probably be me that has the issues with it, and I'm fine with that. Let's just, let's get moving.
Yeah, I agree. Give them a schedule. Like, I couldn't be on this call last Thursday because I was out of town. We just do what we can do and and participate in the process as much as possible.
Yeah, okay. Uh, Councilman Smith, any objections or or comments about that game plan?
Nope, just anxious to move forward like everyone else is.
Okay, um, Tim, Trish, do you feel like you have a good idea of what we're looking for? And that we tentatively have some. Uh, time blocked out Thur- Thursday afternoon, Friday morning. Perhaps we confirm those times up for you. Um. I think we should do that today, actually. What do you, what do you guys suggest for the next Thursday and Friday?
For Thursdays, really, sorry, I'm thinking like later afternoon, like four PM to. You know, six, four to six, four to seven. Friday, nine to twelve.
Agreed.
All right, that should be fine for me as well.
Okay, so that's Thursday, the twenty-fifth, from four to seven PM, and Friday, the twenty-sixth, from nine to noon. That should let you be three or possibly four candidates, depending on, you know, how close we pack them in there. Um, and then we would meet again Monday, the first. Um, let's set a time for the Monday, I guess, Monday, the twenty-second, we won't have. No, excuse me, Monday, the twenty-second will be our first Monday meeting. Are we going to just do that at this time, nine thirty AM on Monday, the twenty-second, and then Monday, the first?
I have a board meeting Monday, the twenty-second, and nine AM, just so you know.
I thought we'd said Monday afternoons, like one or two o'clock.
Yeah, yeah, Monday mornings are not good for me. Afternoons, much more tenable.
Perfect.
I I'll propose.